Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to get the board meeting started. Yeah. That's another way to go. I didn't, I didn't, I never knew that one. I know the finger things, you know, okay. Okay, thank you for coming, welcome to the Monroe Township Board of Education, please write for the salute to the flag, it's right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Mrs. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Feroni.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a form.
Thank you. On number four, in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April 8, 2011, 1. at all schools, 2. Home News Tribune, 3. Cranberry Press, 4. filed with the clerk of the municipality. Student Board Members Report.
We're both absent this evening.
No students. Next, we have the presentation by the Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Marietta.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome our students and--
You need a mic. Okay. Ready? Okay. It's good, right? Yeah, they probably will. Okay. Okay. All right, good evening. Again, I'd like to welcome our students, parents, staff, and administration. Tonight, we will be presenting Showcase for Student Success. The showcase will highlight some of our programs that integrate our special education students with their general education peers and community. And so, we're going to begin with our PowerPoint and our students.
Hi, good night, good evening, everybody. My name is Asherina Fox and John. And I have a poem. The name is "The Blue Rose." It's about a little girl named Jenny. And here it is. Jenny is a little girl, a lovely little girl. She has brown eyes and dark brown hair. But surely, all people don't have to be alike, think alike, act alike, or look alike. Jenny, Jenny is like a blue rose. A blue rose? Have you ever seen a blue rose? Every gardener loved to raise a blue rose. It is rare and beautiful. Jenny is different, too. And so, in a way, she is like a blue rose. Jenny's world is different and unknown to us in some ways. We think she may be in a world in which we might not feel completely at home. To go there might, in a way, to be like going to go on another planet. Maybe Jenny sees things with different eyes. Maybe also, she hear a different drummer. Maybe she also hears things we never hear. In a way, it is, it is, if Jenny is standing behind a screen, a screen we cannot see, perhaps she listens to music we cannot hear. So Jenny listen, so Jenny might hear sounds we never hear. Jenny is like a blue rose delicately and lovely. And because there are so many blue roses, we don't know much about them. We only know that they have to be tended and carefully and loved more. Thank you.
Hello. Our Mill Lake and Academy Learning Center Buddy Program was started five years ago, and it has formed a learning bond between the two schools. The intentions of the program were to foster an understanding of social interactions with and friendships between children with autism and their typically developing peers within Monroe Township community. The program that began five years ago has resulted in an annual reciprocal learning experience. We visit them once or twice a year, we get a huge education in autism. They come to visit us twice a year, and we get to participate in different academic and non-academic activities. And our class has already shared their knowledge of autism with all of the second and third grade students in the Mill Lake School, and they would like to share it with you right now.
Do you know anyone with autism? We have some friends who have autism, and we would like to tell you about them. They are different from us in some ways, but they are the same as us in many ways, too.
We would like to share the book we wrote about ours, our experience with our new friends from the Academy Learning Center.
Our Friends, written by Mrs. Fleming's class. Dedicated to our friends at the Academy Learning Center.
Our Friends with Autism. Would you like to learn about our friends with autism? Autism is a disability. It is something you are born with. You cannot catch autism. It is not contagious. Autism can make it difficult to speak, it can also make it difficult to share and learn new things.
Communicating. Some of our friends communicate differently, different from us. Deborah spoke very well and asked personal questions. Other friends only said a few words at a time. Julie repeated herself many times, and she kept saying, "Hi, guys," and say goodbye to our friends.
Some of our friends did not speak at all. They used machines to communicate. Justin pushed buttons on his machine, and it spoke for him. Jason liked to sing rap songs.
Some of our friends communicated by making noises. We had trouble understanding what they wanted. We had to be very patient. It must have been frustrating for them not to be understood. Please be patient when friends have trouble communicating with you.
Our friends played differently. Some of them had trouble sharing. We tried to help them learn how to share, but sometimes, we needed their teachers' help with this.
Deborah was an excellent rock wall climber. We were very impressed by this. Mason was amazing at the monkey bars. He climbed to the top without holding on, and then enjoyed sliding down the pool. Jason didn't want to play anything, he just wanted to walk around.
Daniel didn't seem to know what to do. We took him by the hand and ran with him. He really liked this. We can, we could see by his smile. Nikki loved it when we pushed her around in her wheelchair. She was smiling and making happy noises. Julie loved the parachute. She kept asking for it. We didn't really want to play with the parachute, but we did want Julie to be happy. We all played the parachute with her and had a fun time being with our friends.
Being a Good Friend. Our friends really enjoyed playing with us. Everyone likes to have fun with friends. Please be a good friend and try to help others have a good time.
Eating. We noticed some different things about the way our friends eat. Some of them needed help from their teachers. Daniel's teacher put his food in his mouth. We were not sure if he was unable or unwilling to feed himself.
Vinnie needed a lot of reminders from his teacher to keep eating. Nikki's hands were usually out of chest, so her teacher had to feed her, too. Some of our friends were very picky eaters. Daniel would only eat soft foods like SpaghettiOs.
Vinnie loved cheese. One friend would not eat the marshmallows in his Lucky Charms. He picked them out and gave them away. Jeremy didn't want his lunch, he wanted his teacher's lunch. Adam wouldn't eat his cheese sandwich because it wasn't warm.
Our friend Sarah smelled her food before she ate it. We tried to set a good example for them by showing their lunchtime behavior.
Being Friends. Even though our friends are different from us in many ways, we had a great time with them. We discovered that we also have a lot in common with them. We are all kids who like to play, we all have feelings and want to be treated with kindness, we all want to have friends.
So if you meet someone who might be different from you, please treat them with kindness and respect. Treat them like a friend. Treat them the way you would like to be treated. Invite them to play with you. Be patient and play something that they enjoy. Just because they may be different doesn't mean that they can't be a great friend.
Good evening. This group of students is from the Barclaybrook Elementary School. All these students participated in our PALS program this year. PAL stands for Peers Assisting in Learning Social Skills. The groups consisted of three self-contained classes and three regular ed classes. They got together and participated in various activities together. And some of our pals are going to share with you a couple of their favorite activities, and maybe a little bit about what they learned about their pal.
My name is, hi, my name is, is Ashley. This is my pal Alyssa Rogers.
Hello, my name is Alyssa. I like being a part of pals because I get to be a friend to someone. My name is, my friend is Ashley. I learned how to help Ashley take turns when we play together. Miss Chase lets us do different activities, but Ashley and I like playing beauty power the best. I try to have Ashley talk to me, so I ask her lots of questions. And now, we like, we talk a lot, we eat lunch together sometimes, also. She is a great pal.
Hello, my name is Kristi. My pal doesn't really talk. We practice greetings, waving, and saying hello and goodbye to each other. She uses pictures or pecs, but we still have fun playing together. Sometimes, I have to show her how to do something, like putting pegs on a board, so I have, I take my hand over hers, and we do it together. I see my turn, and then your turn. Then she starts to do it by herself. I think she likes me. I like her. We wave hello in the halls. I like being a part of pals this year.
My name, my name is Michaela, and I am in Ms. Anderson's class. I'm in the pals group of Ms. Pepe's class. Colin and Taylor go with me. Every Friday before lunch, we go to Ms. Pepe's class. We play games and show how to be a good friend. I have fun with the pals in Ms. Pepe's class.
My name is Sean. My pal, my pals' name is Raleigh from Ms. Mrs. Seitz's class. My favorite activity that we did in pals was when we made the snowman and cut out pictures of our favorite foods. I learned that Raleigh and I both like watermelon.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hello. We are here to present to you the Ambassadors program from both Woodland and Oak Tree Elementary School.
Hi, everybody, how are you doing tonight? My name is Sam. We are members of the Oak Tree 5th and 6th Grade Social Ambassadors, with teachers including Ms. Sadiq, Mrs. Cologne, and occasionally, Mrs. Fernandez. Personally, I would like to tell a short story. First, when I heard I was going to be in Social Ambassadors, I was not happy. Then, when I went the first day, I had so much fun. I said to Ms. Sadiq, "Can I come tomorrow?" She said, "We only have it a couple days a week." I was sad. I really enjoy Social Ambassadors. The atmosphere is really nice. All the other members share some of the same interests. I've made a lot of friends, and we all wish we had it every day. If I didn't have Social Ambassadors, I don't think I would have had a lot of friends. I wouldn't have known that other people had shared the same interests as me if it wasn't for Social Ambassadors. When we are not in Social Ambassadors, we are still friendly to each other and always say hi in the hallways. Sometimes, we remind each other about Social Ambassadors. I would definitely recommend Social Ambassadors to others. It is great. I love it. We all learn good social skills and get candy in the end. Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Alexander Kim, and I am in the 6th Grade. I take part in Social Ambassadors, and ever since, I have learned exactly what the name says, better social skills. In Social Ambassadors, I have met people that I think that I wouldn't normally be interested in, but after we sat down, talked, and played activities, we all discovered that we shared interests. Social Ambassadors help me take my new skills that I've learned and apply them to the people around me. Whenever I see another person from Social Ambassadors, I would no longer walk past them, but I'd stop and say hi. Also, I always accept anybody, no matter what. Social Ambassadors has also shown me to be a better role model for the younger children. As 6th graders, the younger children look up to us, so we have to act our part, and that is exactly what Social Ambassadors has helped show me how to do. I would definitely recommend Social Ambassadors to anybody. Social Ambassadors teaches skills that you could use whether you're young or old, and that I believe that children in all ages and all groups can use it. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for coming. My name is Ateev Jamal, and I'm part of the 5th and 6th Grade Social Ambassadors Group at Oak Tree Elementary School. Social Ambassadors is all about creating good social skills and making new friends. We then carry out the social skills we make to our friends that don't have the chance to be in Social Ambassadors. We get closer every week by playing games. Sometimes, we oppose each other, and sometimes, we play on teams. The friends I make in Social Ambassadors sometimes know my other friends outside Social Ambassadors, and then we can play in large groups during outdoor recess, and we have a lot of fun. We learn many new things from playing games and interesting facts that your friends may know. For example, I learned that the game show Survivor is actually a remake of the original version. I learned this from a game called Card Pictionary. All in all, Social Ambassadors was a great experience this year, and I, I wish I could continue it into next year at the middle school.
Okay, Mrs. Mancuso and Mrs. McLeod and I, we always interchange our names, we've been together for so long. Anyway, we started the Brookside Garden Buddy Program this year, in which collaboratively, we work with two self-contained classes in our, in our school. And our 3rd grade class is participating in this wonderful program. So, here are the students.
The Garden Buddy Program at Brookside School was developed to help us build a bridge that will allow us to develop relationships, which otherwise may not have been easily formed.
Our Brookside Garden Buddy Program is a great, great way to make a new friend as we work side by side and learn about gardening together.
Being garden buddies helps us to learn to be better communicators through speaking, making better eye contact, and by listening.
Through this, through this program, we learn to better understand and appreciate each other's differences. We all have unique qualities that make us special.
We like, we look forward seeing, to see, seeing, and saying hello to our garden buddies in the hallways at Brookside as well as in the community.
Our friendships started off like little seeds, and now, they are growing and flourishing as we care and tend to each other's needs. Our friendship will be deeply rooted.
We learn that helping others is fun, and that when we help others, we receive help in return. Helping others feels good inside.
The Garden Buddy Program allows us to put what we learn into action as we teach others. We look forward to gardening with our garden buddies every Friday. It makes learning fun.
If you notice on their slides here, they have grown quite, quite a bit of vegetables for us, and, and you'll see they have tomatoes and all other things. Maybe Marie, I don't know if you can bring that back? That's their garden outside of Brookside. And it's really grown, and, and they get quite a bit of vegetables that they, they utilize also.
Hi, everybody, I'm Ms. Granny, I am the self-contained teacher over at Apple Garth. Unfortunately, my boys couldn't be here with me tonight, but I want to introduce to some, to you some very important people who I work with. One is Mr. John Devine, who has helped us with our work program. Ms. Judy Feierstein, who has helped us with our socialization. Ms. Rosa Pieron, my classroom para, thank God for her. And Ms. Sandy Matul, my other para. All right, so I'm going to introduce to you a very special young lady named Monique, who's going to talk about working with my students.
Hi, my name is Monique Smith. I am an 8th grade student at Apple Garth Middle School. My LAL class and I help Ms. Granny's autism class with their various crafts and activities. I personally look forward to helping them every Friday, and it has inspired me to be a special education teacher when I grow up.
And as you can see from our PowerPoint, our boys do a lot of jobs around the school. They recycle for Apple Garth, we work in the library stamping books, shredding papers, we sort out the teachers' mail for them. The boys get paid, and they are allowed to purchase things from our school store every week. They have to learn how to manage their money. Other things we do is we do a cooking lesson where they develop recipes using pictures, and then they follow that recipe to make an item of the week.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Chris Russo. I'm 18 years old, and I'm a senior at Monroe Township High School. I'll be graduating this June. My story begins when I was 2 years old. My parents became concerned upon my language development, lack of eye contact, inability to sustain attention, and high-end sensitivity to many things. I received early intervention, and by the time I was 5 years old, I was diagnosed with learning disabilities ranging from PDD to Asperger Syndrome to communication impairment. Most children at the age of 5 are very talkative and sociable. However, I was different. I was unable to speak until I was 5 years old. I had trouble communicating to my parents or anyone else. I only spoke by using short phrases or one-worded answers. I didn't like to be touched and became extremely anxious when surrounded by large crowds or groups of people. Also, when I started going to school, I would get very nervous over little details or mishaps that occurred. To assist my needs, I was put in self-contained classes until the 4th grade, and after that, in resource classes or classes that had a second teacher to assist me. Once I reached high school, my performance in both academics and sports improved drastically. Tests revealed values suppressing 80% of the student population in language and math. This was deemed a very rare case because only a very small portion of individuals can improve their scores so fast and at such a high rate. I no longer needed resource classes and a second teacher in the classroom for math and language. I started reaching for tougher academic classes such as AP Biology. I am one of a small group of students with an IEP to take an AP class. However, the thing that improved the most was my communication with other people and my relationship toward a particular person. The majority of my life, I had trouble socializing with others, and I couldn't keep steady friendships with people. However, this changed after I decided to participate in high school sports and weightlifting. I became more confident myself in my abilities. My interest in science, especially in the field of genetics and biology, also progressed. I became interested in genetic research that is being done to improve everyday life in all areas from medical to agricultural. I'm a member of the National Honor Society. I've also been awarded the Rebecca S. McDonald Award, which will I receive at Millisix County College on May 4th. This award is given to students that have overcome obstacles and have shown motivation to achieve in all areas such as self-advocacy and post-secondary planning. I am the first person from Monroe Township High School to receive this award. I've been told that I'm a success story. The most important message I, message I can give to children with special needs is that with a lot of hard work, supportive family, and school, you can accomplish anything that you desire. Never give up and always learn from your mistakes. Don't get distracted by the small stuff, focus on your goals. This fall, I'll be attending Rutgers University in the School of Environmental and Biological Sciences, majoring in genetics. Thank you to all the great teachers, specialists, and supports that have helped me all these years. A special thank you to my parents and sister for always supporting me in everything I do. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just need a minute to compose myself, I'm, I'm sorry. My name's Kirsten Raski, I'm a parent in the school district. I have 3 children in the school district. I have a senior, I have a sophomore, and I have a 6th grader. And I got to tell you the reason why watching everything tonight is amazing. Chris, Chris Russo back there, he's not even listening. He did a phenomenal job. I could say this because Chris was up here, but I just spoke to Chris's mom. 13 years ago, when my son entered the preschool program, Chris's mom and I used to sit on the wall in front of the old Mill Lake, when there was a wall there, because that's where my daughter was in kindergarten, and that sort of special education bus from Woodland would drop off Joey. And she would tell me, "It's going to be all right." And she was right. And Chris, I'm so proud of you because I remember you from way back when. Congratulations. What I just want to tell you briefly is about what it's like for parents transitioning through our program. We are so blessed here in Monroe Township to have our program. 13 years ago, I took a child into the, at that time, it was called the Preschool Handicap Program. They told me he was multiply disabled because he needed speech therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. My son, like Chris, had delayed speech. My son, like Chris, had delayed speech. He had maybe 40 words when I put him on the bus that first day of school, and I thought these people were nuts. They told me I had to put a little kid, three years old, actually 37 months, sake of how little he was, onto a bus with no words. And I did it. It was the best thing I ever did in my life. As parents, we had to push our kids a little bit further, but our teachers had to push our kids too. When preschool program was in Woodland, I had the most amazing teachers there. One thing that they did, they start to install confidence in my son. They made him climb that first rung on the playground, which he was not going to climb. And I think he cried about it for a day or two later. But now he climbs up high. The other thing that they did is they gave him speech. I never thought he would have speech. All of a sudden, I got a kid with no speech, and they gave me back a kid that wouldn't stop talking. Sometimes I'm like, you know, what? Can you please stop? Please stop? But what happens is, as we change grades, our children transition. Our children transitions into a new school, and we transition into new schools too. For our parents, though, it's a little bit different. Because we get a new school, we get new teachers, we get new case managers as well. And it's scary for us. So when we transitioned into kindergarten, we went from the preschool program to self-contained kindergarten program, where Joey got pulled out for 10 minutes every day to go into a general education, which was great. I also learned a lot about IEPs, Individualized Education Programs, Plans, one of those two P-words. And found out from my very first caseworker, who's no longer with us, something she told me that stayed with me. I walked into an IP meeting, and she said, "Mrs. Raski, you look very nervous. You look very upset." I said, "I am." She's like, "Why? Everything is fine. We're all in this together. We all have a common goal, and that's the best for Joe." And that was the best thing anybody has ever told me. And I took that with me for every single IEP meeting that I ever went through. And I've gone through a lot. In Mill Lake, we were in self-contained. We were inclusion classes. We got pulled out for classes. Then he had the opportunity to be in a second and third grade classroom together, which was wonderful, with one of the most wonderful teachers. I also had my speech teachers, who have been with me for years. And some of those are here tonight, some of the people who know Joe. Joe still cannot say his Rs. That's just one of those things, but we've gone, we've gone further than that. Moving from Mill Lake, I got to trans, go again into Woodland School. This time, though, there was no more self-contained. We were in integrated classrooms, which meant there was a special education population in with the general ed. Another unbelievable experience over those next three years. Unbelievable teachers. The principal there, who since retired, remembered Joe from the preschool handicap program. That says a lot about the people who work in our district who remember our children from five years old and on. And there's people in this room tonight too, who remember my Joe from that little. From Woodland, the first scary transition. I went to Apple Garth. Apple Garth was, I don't know if it was scary for him or for me. I think it was for me. Got a new caseworker, whole new ball of wax. Joe went into resource rooms. Resource rooms, for those of you who don't know, are classes that are a little bit smaller, and they're taught at a slower pace, but they're the same information that the general education students learn. There, in both seventh and eighth grade, Joe's language arts teachers brought out the best of him. In seventh grade, they let him teach a class one day. They were learning to storyboard and diagram. Joe knew the story inside and out. The teacher said to him, "Would you like to teach the class?" And with her moderating, Joe got up and drew out that storyboard on the blackboard. And he taught the class and led the discussion. I happened to go to Apple Garth for something else that day and saw the teacher, and she let me know. She showed me pictures that she took of my son. I went home and cried. When Joe turned 13, I cried that day too. Because 10 years before, I had put him into a school with no speech, with meltdowns, couldn't touch him, all sorts of things. And here at 13, I had a child who, for some reason, decided to play football and decided that he liked talking in front of people. That wasn't from me. That was from his teachers giving him that confidence. Eighth grade again, his teacher did the same thing. He brought an idea to class and taught a whole lesson class about his idea. Apple Garth was amazing. From Apple Garth, we transitioned, transitioned once again. Transitioned into the high school. Okay, that was scarier than Apple Garth for me. I will tell you that. Joe was very determined. First thing he did is took himself out of speech. He was not going to be in speech anymore, and that, all the rest of it, hence the reason why Joe cannot say his Rs still. Because he just, it's beyond him now. What Joe did do is when he could choose electives, he chose drama. Drama was perfect for Joe. He did well in it. He liked it. He wanted to take drama too this year. I kind of swayed him against it. The other thing Joe said I can do is, "I'm going to keep playing football." And so I sent him to the varsity football team. First freshman, JV, watching your son, and Mrs. Russo can attest for this, dressed for a varsity football game is probably one of the scariest things you ever see in your life, especially knowing where our sons have come from. We have never been so blessed to be in this school district. Twice, I've had the opportunity to move out of the school district, out of state for better career paths. I've chosen not to. And the reason why is because of Monroe, and because what they have done for my son Joe. My son Joe now is a sophomore. He's 16. He chose not to come with me, but that's Joe. That's normal. He's running track, talking about football, worried about his electives, and where he wants to go to college. None of these things could have been possible without our school, without our school system, our teachers, and all the confidence that they've given him. I thank you all. I thank all the kids who talked. And have a good night.
At least I didn't have to follow Chris. I just want to make a couple of statements. Thank you to everybody for participating this evening. It was an unbelievable presentation. Monroe Township overall, for many years, has worked very hard for their special education programs. And I, for one, will never sit here and apologize because we're above adequacy and because we can provide these programs to all our students. I'll never do that. It won't ever happen on my watch. So just keep one thing in mind. And I, I hate to say this as a, as a sales pitch, but we want to try and keep all the programs here. So please, there's something coming up that's pretty important in Monroe Township. I won't say what, because we all know what that is. Please remember to, to do the civic duty, for lack of a better term. I did want to mention one thing. Is Sam still here? The social ambassador? Where's Sam? Sam? Sam, you don't have to come up. I could see you. I loved your comment about the candy. Because here's the thing. A while back, we had a board member who were named nameless, used to pump us full of candy at the end of the board meetings, and I thought it was a great thing to make us keep coming back. So I'm hoping that board member will reinstate that practice, because I, for one, was a champion. If there's any other... I'll open it up to any other board members who'd like to say something. Mr. Klein.
I'm shocked. Ooh, it works. You know, those of you who've been at other meetings have heard me speak. And I hope we have somebody here from the media to cover this and put it in print, so the governor sees what a good school system this is. I know I speak for myself and everybody else on the board, that we're fed up with being, having to take a backseat when it comes to financing because we're over adequacy. You see something like this, where we have our own students helping other students. I mean, what can be any better than that? When you see this young man that started, started, we'll call it handicapped at the time. Look at him now. I mean, it's... I'm, I'm totally, I'm totally, totally speechless. And it makes, whatever time we put in, whatever decisions we make, it makes it worthwhile. And as far as the parents, the, the young lady who just spoke about her son Joey, she says it's the teachers and it's every, it's the parents too. With the parents backing, the parents reinforcement, that's what does it, and that's a team effort. And I'm just, I'm floored. Thank you.
Mr. Chiarella.
I just, I just want to thank you guys. You guys are awesome. The kids, the parents, the teachers. I mean, you, you, you just, this is, this is why we're here, you know? This is why I'm here. And, you know, when you, when you look at the way we're, we, we receive our aid from the state, we're penalized because we're above adequacy. There are districts out there that actually applaud when they, when they lessen the amount of children that they have who have, who have learning, learning disabilities and things like that. And, and this is one reason, all of you are one major reason why we can, we, we, we have to maintain the path that we're on, and we, we need to keep doing what we're doing. Because these are, these are some great stories. And you're my hero, buddy. So, thank you.
Ms. Ferroni.
Just want to say, I, I've known Chris Russo since he's three years old. I did not realize that was him. He and my son Brian started preschool, early preschool intervention together. And I can't tell you the pride to see him up here. Brian, and he separated. Brian went through Jamesburg K to eight with a wonderful special ed program and child study team, and transitioned into the high school. And without the support of Ms. Barata, and Marietta, and Ms. Friedman, and Ms. Basile, and the entire staff and administration at the high school, these kids, the, the products that are coming out tonight, and for the K to 12 for Monroe, would just not be possible. And I can't tell you how heartwarming it is to see Chris come to the place he's come to. So it was wonderful.
I agree with the other board members. And over the 12 years that I've been on the board, we've had a lot of programs that come before us, and a lot of students, and a lot of activities. But I don't think there's ever been an activity that kept, brought us speechless and to tears. And I'm very proud to be a part of a board that supports the programs that we're doing in Monroe. And we need to continue to keep doing this job.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'm amazed, and, and I shouldn't be, because I have walked in the parent's shoes. I have a disabled child myself, and I've been in your shoes through the meetings, through the tears, through the transitions are awful. I agree with you. And that's why I said at the last meeting, when it was a budget meeting, and somebody said, "Our special ed costs are too high." No, they're not. We're producing tax-paying citizens through our special education program. We're not producing dependent, lifelong tax-drainers. And thank you, staff.
Anyone else from the board? Alright, seeing no one, we're going to change up the agenda a little bit to give some folks time to kind of filter out. We're going to go into an executive session. So item number 13, be resolved at the Board of Education at Township of Monroe. Hereby goes into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jer-, of New, of, of New Jersey, 1975. NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6 through 10 colon 4 dash 21 to discuss the following subjects. Personnel employee number 001365, personnel negotiations. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. This motion? Mr. Tesler, Mr. Chiarella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for waiting. We'd like to continue with the agenda. Item number seven is the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak before the board, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Michelle Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. Is the, the closed session, has that been resolved? The issue?
Yes.
Can you discuss that, please, then?
There'll be a motion relative to that discussion. And then if the board wants to discuss it after that motion, then they certainly can do that.
Well, once the resolution is, yes, but once the closed session is done, we can discuss it. So this is my public forum, the, my, the opportunity to have it discussed now.
We could discuss it as part of the, part of the superintendent's report.
She's correct. You can say what went on there. You don't have to give names.
Right. Once you've resolved the issue in closed session.
One item discussed was a personnel matter regarding an employee who was being recommended for suspension. And the other was an update on the status of the negotiations with the Teachers Association, which is currently at impasse.
And then at the, at the resolution, we'll know whether that employee is being suspended or not?
That is correct.
Okay. And could you explain J., please?
On the superintendent's report?
It's page seven. Recommended that the board approve avid...
We're not in the superintendent's report yet.
Okay, so this is a...
But it's not part of the closed session.
No, I know. We're, I'm done with the closed session question. Can I speak to what's on the agenda?
Well, you can actually speak to it after we do the superintendent's report as a second public forum.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My question is, J., can you explain J.? The avid through grant funds, $74,000?
Yes. That's professional development for the expansion of the avid program that is currently in the district.
So the $74,000 will be to teach teachers?
Yes.
Is that, do we have to have matching funds for that grant?
No.
Okay. And on the board action, you're going, there's a bill list for nearly $9 million? Is that a month, is that going to be our new monthly cost?
Mike?
That's, that's under the Business Administrators Report?
Yes.
And that's correct. That is a monthly bill list total.
So we, we're paying out about $9 million a month approximately for operating costs?
That is correct. For that particular month that you're referring to.
It's March 2011.
That is correct.
And is that ordinarily high, or is, is it going to be about that on a monthly basis?
The grand total is $8.7 million.
Right.
Okay. That is for the month of March. The district has a $100 million budget. So that is customary and normal. If you have any questions about any particular components of the bill list, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay. And when you have the bill list, is, it, can, can the bill list be given for, on a monthly basis for all the components? Or would I have to look at the whole budget? In other words, is it an itemized list on a monthly basis?
Yes. The bill list is presented each month. It's approved by the Finance Committee before it comes to the board. There's sample audits performed by Mr. Larry. And when he's satisfied, and only then, is it presented to the Board of Education.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Marvin Braverman talked me into coming here tonight. It's Morley Meldon. I live in Greenbrier at Whittingham across the way. And I don't come here very often, but Dr. Hamilton knows how concerned and dedicated I am to education throughout the country, not just here and at high levels, where we're making some progress with the help of a lot of foreign leaders too. But we've got to keep up this education thing. And the reason I came here and talked to Sharon Biggs today about the, the whole situation with the money that, that we're not getting. And it's, it's, it's more serious than I think people here realize, because we're concerned with local things and state things. But this is going to have national implications too. How would you like to, a year from now, turn on the evening news and hear a headline? State Supreme Court orders Governor Christie must increase aid to schools. How would you like to hear that? How would you like to hear that? U.S. Constitution holds states responsible for education. Anyway, it's, it's a long story, but the reason I'm here tonight is to tell you that we cannot negotiate with the kind of people that are entrenched in the Education Department with this governor. There is only one way, and that is to sue the governor and the State Department of Education. And this should be a Constitution suit, because no way, no way can the governor or anybody in that Department of Education justify the way they dole out the different levels of money. It's unbelievably inadequate and incorrect, and does not go by the constitutional requirements. So, I am absolutely positive that if we, with other groups that are fighting this thing in the state, if, if we pursue it, that in court, Governor Christie will finally meet his, his denouement, because there's no way he or that State Department can defend it. Now, I'm not a constitutional lawyer, but I know enough about it so that a good constitutional lawyer could beat the pants off them. And we may have to get, throughout the state, more. What is a proper amount to be responsible for education? 30%? 40%? I don't know. But the state has got to be behind education, and this state isn't. Now, a year ago, we had a big discussion at my house, a big group, just last weekend, and it was about saving money. And the reason I, I found an old thing that I clipped from a USA Today article, Thursday, May 6, 2010, just about a year ago. Now-
I have to kind of wrap it up, sir. I'm sorry.
The reason, yeah, but this is very important, because this is of national importance, not just here. Number one on their hit list, New Jersey's new governor, Chris, Chris Christie, is trying to reduce the size and cost of state government. If he succeeds, and I believe the mood in that state is for revolutionary reform, New Jersey could be a model for the rest of the country, including Washington. Now, I don't want Governor Christie's attitude about education to penetrate the rest of this country, but right now, he is being revered all over the country, and this kind of a lawsuit could really hit him. And I'm telling you, there are people out there that'll work with you, and we can hit them hard. I know it can be done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Klein? Wait, well, hold on one second. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Klein?
I just want to make some comments about what this gentleman said. First of all, the problem that we have here was the Abbott decision, and that's the New Jersey Supreme Court. I want you to understand that there were people sitting on the Supreme Court that never sat on a bench before. The job of the Supreme Court is to interpret the Constitution, not write laws. They wrote the Mount Laurel decision, and they wrote the Abbott decision. As far as the funding that we get, I did speak up at the Town Hall meeting in Woodbridge about a month ago. Governor Christie was there. And I brought up about us getting $204 per student, and he does like everybody else is, it's the Abbott decision, and it's the formula. Now, the formula was put into place by Governor Corzine. I want you to understand that. So, any money that's distributed to our state is distributed based on the formula that was written by the legislature and approved by the then-Governor Corzine. And you'll find that out if you speak to anybody in our municipal administration. That was a mistake. Any money comes in from the federal government is distributed based on that formula. We get nothing. And if they tell us that we are a wealthy community, East Brunswick is wealthier than we are, and they're getting $14 million a year. So, whatever, whatever they try to use as an excuse, there's no possible way. As far as the formula goes, I don't know. We all don't know what formula they use that comes down to $204 a student for us. It's pitiful.
Sorry, you can't speak, I'm sorry. Mr. Leary, I saw your hand a minute ago?
Yes. I think you're preaching to the choir, so I think we should go forward.
Anyone else on the board? Seeing no one, moving on, superintendent's report?
On the superintendent's report, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge a grand accomplishment for our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Jeff Gorman, who is now Dr. Jeff Gorman. Congratulations.
Dr. Jeff.
Mrs. Lynn Barberi is now Dr. Lynn Barberi. One of our teachers who is, I don't know if Brian is still here, is Brian still here? Brian Latwis also completed his doctorate. And we have more, more in the pipeline, so congratulations. The enrollment report for the month of March is enclosed in your report, showing an additional 143 students. Those youngsters who are currently in out-of-district placement is also enclosed for your review, and our home instruction list, which continues to grow, is also available for your review. Our fire drills and lockdown drills are listed, although the lockdown drills replace one of the fire drills, some of our schools still elect to conduct two, which is certainly permissible. Moving on to personnel items, personnel items A through B, I believe, and I will read W in. Yes, personnel items A through V. It is recommended, Mr. Board President and members of the Board of Education, by the Superintendent, that personnel items A through V be approved by roll call vote.
Motion?
No move.
Kathy Calipanovic and Kathy Leonard? Discussion? No question.
What is the correction on Q? It was obviously passed once, and now we're correcting it. I'm just curious.
That's right. I remember that. It was initially improved as a half-year stipend, and it's actually a full year.
It's a full curriculum rewrite. Oh, Mr. Klein?
I don't know whether I'm allowed to ask this question. On the personnel E, to rescind the contract, is that something we can speak about to find out what the cause was, or, because it's personnel, we can't ask?
You cannot discuss that individual because she hasn't been raised.
Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, that's all right.
Anyone else?
You ever do this before?
Roll call, Mr. Gorman.
Mr. Leary?
Yes, but I recuse myself on item P.
P?
P. I said Papa.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
I'd like to read into the record personnel item, letter W, as a result of our closed session. I just want to pull up the employee number, if I may. It is recommended by the Superintendent that employee number 001365 be suspended without pay, retroactive March 29, 2011, through May 18, 2011.
No move.
Second. Mr. Klein? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, item W passes.
And board action items, it is recommended by the Superintendent that board action items A through K be approved by roll call vote.
No move.
Leonard?
Second.
discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Leary?
I approve, but on item G, I am a member right now of the Educational Service Commission.
So, you abstain?
Say what you please.
Abstain?
Yeah.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, board action items passes.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Business Administrator's Report?
Are we supposed to be electing somebody to be the, the next representative to the MCESC?
Not yet. Anthony Alach?
Is that tonight?
Oh, it's, that, that's number G.
Anthony Alach?
I thought it always came after the, well, I don't know.
Oh, it shouldn't have been included within the, you have to pull this out as a separate Do we have anybody that wish it, Mr. Tesler?
I would like to nominate Mr. Leary.
I'd like to second.
Motion to the second? We'll do a roll call. Any discussion?
I think he's the perfect candidate.
I second that.
Roll call?
Mr. Leary? Abstain.
You can vote for yourself.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Congratulations, Mr. Leary. You could have voted for yourself. Okay, moving on, Business Administrator's Report?
Mr. Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through R be approved by consent roll call.
No move.
Leonard?
Second.
Mr. Klein? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovic?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Great. Item number 10 on the agenda, Board Presidents' Report, I'm going to be brief, being the last board meeting before the election coming up at the end of the month. As we saw tonight, there's a lot of great things going on in the district that the Board of Education would like to continue to move forward. As was clearly articulated, this Board of Education, as well as many other Boards of Education, are falling victim to issues that are not ours, that we have inherited major problems, and we must continue to move forward. We need to keep the lights on and keep moving forward. I'm hoping that the, the Township realizes that we should not put our children in front of this issue and make them the end result of any kind of drastic cuts that we need to do in budgets to make our budgets balance. The Board of Education is absolutely and positively accountable to make sure that we deliver the best education we can. It's the responsibility of the community to hopefully support us in that endeavor to move forward. It's, it's sad that we're put in a situation like this where we have to, you know, in effect, you know, look to try and place blame where it would be, that the state's not supporting it, or state's not supporting education, that the federal government isn't pulling their weight, but at the end of the day, local residents are responsible in addition. This is something that they have control of their destiny. We will affect whatever changes that we need to do to move forward, but I'm hoping that the community members realize that, you know, anybody can go ahead and write letters and look to try and affect change at a very high level, but this is a very simple task that you can do to affect change and continue things moving forward in Monroe Township directly. So, remember what, you know, the date is coming up, and please exercise your right to vote. Beyond that, I'm just going to open it up to committee reports. Anyone wishing to report? Seeing no one, other Board of Education business. Mr. Tesler?
I'll be real brief, I just want to, in lieu of the student members not being here, just mention a few things. Two weeks ago, got to attend Bye Bye Birdie, presented by the Applegarth Middle School. It was a great show, and Mr. Klein was there. I was there two of the nights, and the kids did a great job, and Mrs. Kaufman and crew should be commended for their, all their work. And we'll also mention that the high school is being, is putting on Thoroughly Modern Millie, starts tomorrow and runs through Sunday.
Anyone else? Mr. Klein?
Not so much for the amount of people that are here, but for the people that are going to watch this on Channel 28. There will be a planning board meeting the last, no, it's the fourth Thursday of the month. Hovnanian, their application for conversion should be heard or continued to that Thursday. It's important for our residents to get there and voice their opinion. As I mentioned earlier, they're going from an age-restricted community of 328 homes to a family community of 328 homes, which means if you take the average of 2.3 children per family, and let's round it out to two, you're talking between 600 and 700 potential students. I'm not saying it's going to happen right away, but you're talking a whole new school. The other thing is, as they sell, a lot of these families may already have two children, and you see what the growth has been. So, it's important that we fight it, even though according to the law, we really don't have a leg to stand on, but you have to voice your opinion. The law was written for the developers and not for the residents. They are not allowed to use, in turning down an application, they are, the planning board or zoning board, whoever is to hear it, is not allowed to turn it down based on the added school population, which is idiocy. The other thing I just want to make, make clear, and then I'll, I'll shut up, is the fact that what you see going on now is Hovnanian comes out and says that they cannot sell age-restricted homes, and therefore, based on the law that was written in 2009 by the state legislature, they have a right to convert it to a family community. They did absolutely nothing for over two years, if not longer, to try to sell properties. So, in reality, any builder, it's very easy for a zoning board to give approval for a PRC, which is an age-restricted community, because it will have no impact on your school population. So, whoever moves into those developments, all the tax money they pay in property taxes are going to go 60% to the schools, and the rest distributed elsewhere. So, of course, if it's heard in front of the zoning board, you're going to give them the okay. But then they do absolutely nothing to sell it, and then they come in front of the zoning board, because you have to go back to the board that approved you, and ask for a conversion. They never tried to sell it. They said that they can't sell age-restricted homes. My community and regency is selling upwards of 70 a year. What's the one down below on Applegarth? South, Southgate? Stonebridge? Stonebridge is still selling. Then on, on, I don't know if it's Prospect Plains or Cranberry, Union Hill Road, there's another one there, Centex, I think, built that one, or vice versa. But anyway, they're still selling. So, how can they come out and say that they're not? And where the law should state that the zoning should revert back to what it was before, you're not allowed to do it. So, they can use that of a way of getting approval, do nothing for two years, and then bring in families. The residents must come in and speak up against it. Thank you. I tried to be short, but I can't.
What's the date? What's the date and time?
Last Thursday, the month?
It's the fourth Thursday of the month.
28.
At the municipal building.
Seven? What time?
I don't know what the date is.
Time?
Oh, time is 7 o'clock.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one, item number 13 has been done. Item 14, public forum, anyone wishing to speak before the board, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Michelle Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. There was a question on, can you explain K? It's recommended that the Summer Institute for Academic Diversity, can you explain that Can you explain that and the 37, almost $38,000 that that cost?
Dr. Gorman?
I like the way that sounds.
Michelle, that is also a professional development expenditure for teachers, administrators at the University of Virginia. It's a week-long institute on closing the achievement gap. It's a very intensive institute that has produced great results for our district, and I could show you the results of this district in student achievement, so...
There's a direct link, you think, from the training to student achievement?
If I could give you 130 pages, that there is.
Okay. And so, so that, that accounts for the teachers that are going, I guess, room and board at the university and travel expenses?
Yes.
And so does the one before J., the $74,000?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all for teachers' expenses. And where is that going to be held?
That is actually in San Diego this year, and there's one closer, but it's actually a savings of money, because it's a, it's a smaller institute, a day shorter in San Diego, as opposed to going to Chicago or another institute. It's impossible to bring those services to us. It doesn't exist in that capacity because of the way the institute is presented as part of the certification process for the advancement of the individual determination for kids. So, after calculating a shorter retreat, it is actually a savings to the district than going to a longer retreat at a closer location.
Okay, and how, how many days is the San Diego one?
It's a three-day institute.
And how many, how does a teacher qualify to go there?
It's a voluntary process that's gone through extensive criteria in the Avid system.
And what does that mean?
What I could do is I could show you all the criteria and the application process. Teachers have to submit applications to either become an Avid elective teacher or an Avid site team member.
Okay, and how many teachers are, qualify for J.?
Is J. the Avid piece?
J. is the Avid, right, the San Diego.
The Avid piece would be a combination from the middle school and the high school, approximately arranged from 14 to 16, inclusive of myself, the district director, the site team coordinators, administrators, and teachers.
Okay, so 14 people?
From each site, possibly, 14 to 16 from each site. So, about 28 for the whole district.
Okay, and K, the ones...
14.